Welcome, everybody. It's an honor to be here. My name is Scott Elliott and I'm the Executive Director of the Dr. Peter Aides Foundation in Vancouver. Today's session is looking at where will HIV be in 10 years' time? For me, the impetus of this started less out of a research question and more out of a practicality question and wondering from operating an organization, how do we plan for the future? How do we plan to look at what our participants and our clients will need 10 years out? Given that in so many areas of the world, in medical science and in social and vaccinations as we're seeing with COVID, there's so many rapid changes in the world and trying to get a handle on where is HIV going to be 10 years from now? And what do we need to think of from a multi-sectoral basis? So from a research basis, but also from a societal basis and for me, very hands-on operational basis. I'm very excited to say that we've got seven amazing panelists with us today and we're going to be able to hear from each of them for a few minutes. And then at the end, we'll come together for a Q and A, which will encourage people to participate in that. As we go around, I am going to ask each person to introduce himself, to maybe tell us a little bit about who you are, what you do, and then look forward to hearing about your projections for 10 years from now in 2031. So we're going to start with John Maxwell and John, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, everyone. I'm John Maxwell, the Executive Director at ACT, formerly known as the AIDS Committee of Toronto. We're a community-based nonprofit organization that works in Toronto, both to reduce HIV infections in some of our priority populations, but also to improve the health and wellbeing of all people living with HIV in our city. So I was asked to think a little bit about where will HIV be in 10 years? And initially, I wanted to be optimistic, optimistic around access to things like testing, new testing modalities, treatment, PrEP access, new and improved treatments, and also really promising interventions that really can improve the health of some of the communities most impacted by HIV. But I also have to contextualize, given where I am. So I'm in Toronto during COVID and the Greater Toronto and Hamilton area is the epicenter of our third and largest wave of COVID here in Ontario, also the epicenter of HIV. We see COVID impacting essential workers who are often marginalized and racialized. We've seen inequitable access to both testing and to vaccine access. And many of these so-called essential workers are making minimum wage. They're not being prioritized for access to vaccination. And we have a government in our province that really is refusing to acknowledge the science, including their own science table around COVID and every single medical officer of health in this province by refusing to provide paid sick days. So that's just one example. They've also decided initially to close playgrounds. But yet, you know, they have this wide range of people that are deemed to be essential. They also wanted to enforce people walking out on the street by having the police stop people. And we've all seen how overpolicing has impacted folks living with and increased risk for HIV. So I really want to start by saying that we learned nothing from HIV or SARS, because I think the only reason we will be able to have an optimistic view about where HIV will be in 10 years is if there is political will. And I worry that post-COVID, all of the rush to somehow get rid of the debt that's been accumulated by a number of levels of government will actually be worse off for many of us living with HIV and the communities most impacted, because governments will do cuts to programs that are already not well-funded. So I hope we can take our learnings from COVID and apply this to other health issues, including HIV. So will we actually prioritize those populations most at risk and ensure access to treatment and testing? Will we sort of look at systemic and syndemic issues and really invest in the social determinants of health that often put people at increased risk for HIV? So that being said, and not to be a Debbie Downer, I do think there are the potential for real advances in terms of HIV. And I first want to look at HIV testing. We've seen here in Ontario how rapid and point-of-care testing has been used quite effectively in reaching communities at increased risk of HIV, particularly when public health or clinics work closely with community organizations and actually engage those organizations in providing testing. Prior to the pandemic, we were working locally in Toronto with an HIV testing organization to provide really culturally competent testing at ACT for gay, bi, queer men that really took a status-neutral approach. So, you know, creating an environment that wasn't just rushing people out the door and that was actually offering opportunities to speak with the counselor around mental health or other issues and then actually linking them to services. And we've seen the recent approval of self-testing here in Canada, which I think could also be great. The problem, of course, is around cost. I'm hoping that over the next number of years, governments will see the importance of working with community to actually get self-tests to folks who really need it. And I hope that there are further advances in HIV self-testing, including saliva-based tests that are as accurate, that would allow testing to happen, particularly in either remote or rural communities, but also, again, within communities that are at highest risk for HIV here in Toronto. I see promise around treatments. You know, we've seen the approval of longer-lasting injectables. And I'm hopeful that over the next decade, we'll see those injectables last for maybe three to six months. And wouldn't it be wonderful if someone living with HIV, when going in for their regular blood work, could get an injection? Or wouldn't it be great, even a pill? One of the things that I think we've seen some movement on, but I would argue not enough, is both treatment and PrEP access. We've seen jurisdictions like B.C. and more recently, in the past few years, in Saskatchewan, along with the federal, the four federal programs that provide coverage for ARVs in PrEP. And we've seen Yukon step up. And I really do think that in order for us to get, you know, to zero, as we talk about, or to reach 90, 90, 90, or to reach 95, 95, 95, treatment access is going to be key. And again, that's where political will comes in. I'm here in Ontario, the largest province in Canada, the most folks living with HIV. We don't have access. We don't have universal access to PrEP or to treatment. So I'm hopeful that over the coming decade, more and more governments will see the importance of investing in both PrEP and treatment. One of the things that I'm really excited about, and I think it could be a model, it's certainly not new. We've actually been working on this. I've been working on this for probably well over a decade, is really taking a really holistic approach to the health of cis and transgender gay, bi, and queer guys in Toronto. We here in the city of Toronto still continue to see gay men being dramatically overrepresented in terms of new HIV diagnoses, still well over 70% of all new HIV diagnoses. And yet, we've never had a comprehensive approach to addressing health broadly amongst gay, bi, queer men. And I'm really excited that finally, a number of us, a number of community organizations, working with the OHTN and with some funding from the ministry, and now working with clinical and other mental health providers, are working to create a health hub for gay men in Toronto. And it's really being led by community organizations in terms of the values of this hub. We've heard a lot from guys who, many of whom either don't have a physician or aren't out to their doctor about their physician, how challenging it could be to even get the appropriate STI or HIV test that they need. This place that will hopefully open in July with a soft launch will provide all of that. It'll be by and for gay, bi, queer men. Guys will see themselves reflected, both in the staff and the volunteers. We'll use cutting-edge new technology that will include things like the ability to self-swab, the ability to get confirmatory HIV and STI tests within 24 hours, linkages to PrEP and to care, but also mental health, substance use programs, and a community space. And I'm really excited. And so for me, what I hope this will do will mean that in 10 years, we will see a dramatic reduction in new HIV diagnoses. We'll see better, longer lives for folks living with HIV and we'll be well on our way to end the epidemic. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much, John. Appreciate your comments. Next, we'll go to Winston Husbands. Winston, over to you.
Thank you very much. My name is Winston Husbands. I'm a senior scientist at the Ontario HIV Treatment Network and also an associate professor at the Dalalana School of Public Health at the University of Toronto. So I'm going to talk about racism and the end of HIV, because I think that we're headed into a situation, this idea of ending HIV, or at least ending HIV transmission as we know it, by 2030 or 2031. I think we're sort of focusing on business as usual, which is going to lead us in the wrong place. But I hope to end by showing that that particular endpoint that I described is not necessarily inevitable. Now, everywhere here in Canada and just about everywhere else in the world, up until COVID came along, there was lots of enthusiasm that we'll be able to end HIV by 2030 or 2031, thereabouts, which means, of course, that, I mean, there will still be HIV, but we have the means to really curtail HIV transmission. And, you know, all the indications are that transmission has been in long-term decline, that the engagement cascade seemed to be fulfilling its promise, by which we mean that increasing proportions of people living with HIV were being diagnosed and increasing proportions of those were actually on treatment and care and increasing proportions of those were achieving viral suppression. Here in Canada, however, the situation is... That is what we find, that sort of worldwide optimism is okay for white Canadians, but for most of the others, that is not the reality at all. So as we can see in this series of diagrams here, the trend among white Canadians was more or less consistent with the global trend, you know, in that white Canadians were demonstrating a decreasing proportion of new infections. But it is quite the opposite for black people. So routinely, black people are accounted for, accounting for a quarter of new infections, even though in Canada, black people make up just 3% or 4% of the country's population. So while white people are, white Canadians are experiencing a diminution of new infections, in fact, we can say that to some extent, black Canadians are going in the opposite direction. But black Canadians are not the only ones, as the diagram shows. And this trend is reflected in new diagnoses among the two largest exposure categories among gay and bisexual men in Canada, at least for those that we have this, what we call race-based data. Black people make up 12% of new diagnoses in 2017 and almost half of new diagnoses amount people who acquired HIV by heterosexual exposure in the same year, in 2017. So how we got there is not a secret. There's no mystery to this, really. We, you know, so one of the things that I will mention is criminalization. But this is not, this is not the end of it. And these, these data that we show are stark. But, you know, we also have data on how this relates to the work that we do to HIV. Now, you know, unlike the way how we've sort of discussed criminalization, among black people, criminalization is not really, I'm not sure that it has much to do with HIV. Of course, it has something to do with HIV, but it is not a phenomenon of HIV. I mean, criminalization takes place beyond, over, and above, and before, and after HIV. We are criminalized in the places where we worked. I mean, it begins in the places where we work, in the places where we live, in the places where we go for recreation, and so on. So this is a general phenomenon that black people face. And, you know, it says something when we, when we can say that one-fifth, one of every five people criminally charged for HIV non-disclosure between 1989 and 2015 is black, and so on. It really dramatizes where we are. But if we, if you want a more comprehensive understanding on how structural violence or structurally violent anti-black racism emerges in Canada among black communities, then this publication from the federal government in 2020 is the place to look. And there's all kinds of nuggets in there that you can, that you can chew on to understand where our problem comes from. So why are people being, why are black, why is that? What I'm trying to suggest then is that we might end HIV, but not for black people. And when that happens, the consequences are quite severe, because what it means is that the smart people and their money will move on to other problems. HIV will then become something that is automatically attributed to blackness or associated with blackness. And it will become just one more thing in the repertoire of issues that black people face that will then be insufficiently acknowledged or insufficiently addressed, because the smart people, the funds that support programs and policies and so on will have moved on to other things and we'll be left with this. But moreover, we will be in a stage then where black people will be blamed for their predicament. It will become, this is what it means when something becomes associated in the popular imagination with blackness. So what are these things, if we might sort of put this in a nutshell, that are moving us in this direction? There's the problem of decision-making, which is a really big issue. Our institutions at the federal and provincial level all over the country, people who make decisions about programs and policy, basically what they do is make decisions in their own best interest or in the interest of the populations that they know best or in the interest of the populations, in fact, that they have prioritized. And blackness or black people never really emerge in those priorities. So what happens is that decision-makers come with their own solutions, which really reflect their own ignorance of blackness, their own ignorance of black people. And then their agenda is to get you to go along with what they have already decided. This is the problem of decision-making, where the people who are most affected by this are, in fact, not the ones who are helping to make decisions about what happens. The second thing is this sort of general neoliberal understanding of health and wellbeing, in which we say, well, you know, you are responsible for what happens to you. So it becomes then not about racism or about blackness or about structural violence. It becomes about the failure of black people to do what everybody else thinks they should be doing. And that failure then arises because they are incomplete individuals. They really do not understand their circumstances, or they are lazy, or they are ignorant. So that is where this neoliberal understanding takes us. And the third thing is support for interventions, and I use interventions here broadly, not just the things that researchers do or the things that researchers call interventions, but support for interventions that, in fact, undermine black life. So we have policies and programs that perhaps are designed with other people in mind, not principally or not necessarily black people. But we are told that this is what we will have to do. This is what counts as a response. And we follow these things much to our own, much to our own detriment. So I want to suggest that there's a general framework for changing the course of HIV among black Canadians. But it will involve bringing a new set of thinking to the table. And I'm not, sometimes I get pessimistic that this, that this will ever happen, because I have seen instances, in fact, where decision-makers have set out to punish people, those of us who come with the new ideas, who bring this new thinking, who says, who say, well, you know, business as usual is not good enough. So first of all, we need what I call radically inclusive decision-making. It's not just decision-making by a certain set of people who have anointed themselves to speak for everybody. It is a form of decision-making, in fact, that is inclusive to the extent that the people who are most affected by something get to be part of the decision-making process. The second thing we need are, you know, innovations that really address structural disadvantage, whether they're innovations in testing, prevention, whatever. So for example, you know, in our sort of liberal imagination, the idea of paying people to get tested is not something that we really take seriously. But perhaps it is time to think about how we provide a means for people to get tested. And in a capitalist society like ours, that means usually is money. So if I can put it bluntly, let's pay people to get tested. Or let's, let's enable people to remain in care by giving them the money that they need to remain in care. Instead of saying, while care is available, it's up to you to access it, but we know you can't access it. But, you know, let's just leave things the way they are. Let us think creatively, you know, about different ways of understanding how we do testing, how we do prevention, what it means to be in care and how we keep people in care, that really address the structural disadvantages that people face. The next thing or one of the other issues is the way how funding is allocated. You know, we have ways of, it's sort of a mystery how funding for anything is allocated. I, for example, I have been saying for a long time that, you know, C I H R should reserve a certain pot of money for black people or money that really supports black researchers. Now, this is not something that people like to talk about, of course, because, you know, when you begin to talk about this, people talk about how difficult it would be to manage and reverse racism and all of these kind of things. But in fact, in fact, this is a time where we ought to be thinking creatively about what funding means and how, and how we allocate it. Not the mystery that we've been accustomed to, but really a certain, a level of transparency that really engages our community and supports innovation. And the fourth thing I will mention is data. So one of the, you know, people talk a lot about ending HIV, but you cannot find anywhere in Canada sufficient data to monitor the progress of HIV among black people. There is always, you ask, wherever you ask, there's always the issue, well, these data do not exist. Well, why don't they exist? I mean, we're not talking about rocket science here. You know, this was exposed very dramatically when COVID came along, of course. So now I think COVID has forced a lot of people to think more creatively about race-based data. But we haven't got there yet in HIV. I'm hoping that as this issue unfolds, that the extent to which this issue has emerged with COVID, that we learn something in the work we do about race-based data. Because without these data, we don't know really, why are black people dropping, to what extent or at what rate are black people not accessing care, dropping out of care, falling out of care? You know, is the cascade working for black people? No, we have no idea. And for me personally, nobody has ever been able to tell me that they have an idea about this. So it begs the question, who are we ending HIV for? If some of the population groups that are most affected by HIV, we have no idea about whether things are getting worse, things are getting better, at what rate, and so on and so forth. So these are just some of the general ideas that I want to, I want to bring. I'm not necessarily pessimistic, because I think that where we're heading is not necessarily where we need to end up, as long as we take this moment, seize this moment, if you will, to think creatively about the legacy of problems that have built up and how we're going to get beyond those problems over the next 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Winston. Some very provocative and interesting thoughts and really appreciate hearing from you. And I would now like to introduce Eric Cohen. Aaron, Eric, if we could, go over to you, please.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. So I'm Eric Cohen. I'm a scientist at the Montreal Clinical Research Institute and professor at the University of Montreal. And I also lead the Canadian HIV Cure Enterprise. So as a way of introduction, I thought to review in a couple of slides past research successes in the basic aspect of HIV research related to HIV cure and the challenges that remain, but also explore recent promising progress that offer hope for the future. So I'm just going to share my slide first. So these are my disclosures. So why pursue a cure to begin with? Art is highly effective in suppressing varina and preventing and reversing immunodeficiency and has done an amazing work, a job in improving the health and life expectancy of people living with HIV. However, it is important to recognize that current art regimen comes with different issues. There are, there is the stigma and discrimination associated with HIV disease. There is the cost associated with them in the current shifting funding landscape with, for instance, COVID-19. Current treatment requires daily adherence to prevent the emergence of resistance. There is a lack of access in certain regions and populations worldwide, and there is pale fatigue. There are still uncertainty about the long-term toxicity of art. But importantly, art doesn't impact persistent viral reservoirs that promote chronic immune activation, accelerated aging, and neurocognitive disorder. Actually, it is essential to recognize also that the HIV-positive community strongly supports the pursuit of an HIV cure. And this is perhaps the most important imperative to continue moving forward. The central barrier to an HIV cure is the presence of viral reservoir harboring replication-competent viruses that persist during art. Indeed, despite the suppressive art, as shown on the left, virus rebounds after treatment interruption, revealing this persistent reservoir. This reservoir was revealed in the mid-1990s, but many fundamental properties remain unknown. We define it as replication-competent HIV proviruses that are integrated into long-lived quiescent cells that persist during art. And there are different types of cells that harbor these integrated proviruses. The most understood and well-characterized are really the resting memories for T-cells. But they are increasingly evident that tissue-resident macrophages are also now contributing to the viral reservoir. So what do we know about this persistent viral reservoir? We know that it is established very early on in non-human primed studies. It has been shown that by three-day post-infection, those viral reservoirs are being established. It is very, it is a very rare event. Between one to a hundred cells per million seems to harbor replication-competent HIV, at least in the blood. It is very heterogeneous and distributed widely throughout the body. And given that cells are transcriptionally silent or semi-silent, these cells are completely invisible to the immune system and are not susceptible to, to art. Furthermore, this, uh, this, uh, it is important to note that the viral reservoir is outnumbered by defective viruses, uh, and that about more than 95% of integrated virus are defective, thus complicating the monitoring of the true reservoir, the reservoir that contains replication-competent virus. And more recently, it was shown that a large fraction of the reservoir, about 50 to 60%, of this replication-competent reservoir is part of clonally expanded lineages. So there is currently two concepts of HIV cure. The first concept is really the eradicated cure or classical cure, that is the complete elimination of the replication-competent reservoir. Given the extent of our reservoir reduction required, this represents a very challenging task that so far was achieved in a few individuals, including the late Timothy Brown, the Berlin patient, that underwent allergenic stem cell transplants from donors that carried two defective copies of the CCR5 co-receptor required for HIV entry. The second context, the second concept and more achievable goal in the foreseeable future i- involves the control of viral rebound without eradication of HIV, uh, in the absence of art. So as shown in the, uh, the, the bottom, uh, uh, schematic, this functional cure or sustained HIV remission could exist anywhere in a continuum where there is some degree of reservoir reduction, as shown in green, combined to some degrees of virus suppression from either enhanced immunity with therapeutic vaccines or exogenous administration of long-lasting suppressing agents, as shown in orange. So there is a large array of options that could be defined as a functional cure. So how do we move forward with the reservoir reduction? Reservoir reduction will require to initiate art early to limit the size and the complexity of the viral reservoir. Indeed, rare natural cases of HIV remission clearly show that while, uh, art is a priority for clinical care, it is a component of a potential cure. These rare cases of HIV remissions have also highlighted that reservoir reduction or control will need enhanced immunity to provide durable suppression. So a multi-pronged approach will likely be required to achieve the goal of reducing or controlling the viral reservoir towards an HIV remission. So the concept of immunotherapy to reduce the size of the viral reservoir and enhance immunity is often called the shock and kill approach. Shock is to allow latent cells to not expressing HIV RNA or protein to identify themselves using what we call latency reversal agents. The kill component comprises strategies to enhance native immune cells or to generate engineered cells to enhance clearance of these reactivated reservoir. Of course, this concept needs to be done in condition where varina is suppressed or additional sus- susceptible cells protected from infection. So what are the perspectives for, for the future? There are currently, uh, uh, so there, there, there are, there's the discovery and development of several approaches and such as latency reversal agent to reactivate latently infected cells. There are immunomodulators, genetically engineered defector, uh, antibodies, ex vivo cellular or gene therapy approach and therapeutic vaccine that are very important area of focus of HIV cure research. A large number of these approaches have already entered in human clinical trials. Of course, safety needs to be addressed first. But combination strategies or combination of these approach hold promise and will likely require to activate and eliminate the viral reservoir. So I'm confident that we are in the right direction so that by 2031, we will have intervention that lead to sustained HIV remission in an individual, suppressing varina, minimizing transmission, preventing reinfection, and maintaining viral control in the absence of art. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Erica. Really appreciate you walking us through as we go for a potential cure. Um, next, I'd like to invite Alexandra King to share.
Thank you for that kind introduction. So I'm Alexandra King, member of Nipissing First Nation, and I was asked to provide an Indigenous perspective on where HIV will be in 10 years. Um, I'd like to begin by acknowledging that, uh, we are gathering virtually with all of us being on lands cared for by First Nations Inuit and Métis. I would like to express my gratitude for the warm welcome I've received here by elders, knowledge holders, and community of Treaty Six Territory in the homeland of the Métis. Um, so one of the things that I did when I was thinking about where will we be in 10 years? Uh, I looked back and was thinking about some of the work that has been done. And so this slide here are points that are based on some work that, uh, I did with the International Indigenous Working Group on HIV/AIDS, which included such people as Trevor Stratton and Renee Mashing, as well as Clive Aspen and a variety of colleagues. And, um, I started rejigging things a little bit, but this work that we did back in 2016, we were talking about how, um, Indigenous research must actually improve Indigenous people's health. And, um, it must include Indigenous people and benefit them at all stages in the research process. And specifically, we were thinking about those living with HIV and having that wisdom that comes from, uh, lived and living experience. We also thought it was really important that the researchers themselves recognize the benefit they experience as researchers. And this is above and beyond such things as conference presentations or publications, but rather that we ourselves, um, learn and grow and heal as a consequence of participating in Indigenous health research. Um, it was important that our research ensure good faith. And so things like free prior and informed consent are critically important to Indigenous people. It must address determinants of Indigenous health and wellness, ground research and solutions in Indigenous culture and vision, and uplift and privilege, uh, local Indigenous people, their ways of knowing, being and doing, their elders, their ancestral understandings and self-determination, and all Indigenous health research. So when I was looking at this, I was thinking, wow, these are really lofty goals. And, you know, is it possible for us to even achieve some of this in the next 10 years? And then I was reassured because there has been a lot of work on what I'm going to call infrastructure to really help with this. And specifically, I'm thinking about a variety of training resources because I have so many fellow researchers who will ask me, how do I do good, uh, research with Indigenous people? And so I, um, thought that it would be helpful to provide, uh, so access to some of these things um, so that, uh, people could engage in training and, um, really engage a lot in self-reflexivity. And so everybody would be in a better position to be engaging in Indigenous health research. And so one of the first things that I want to bring people's attention to is, um, the need for meaningful and ethical inclusion of Indigenous people as well as partnerships. And here's a piece of work that, um, is done by Janet Joel and a really incredible team of researchers that is looking at Indigenous community research partnerships. It's an open access, uh, training, uh, course that really is, uh, I think, very well done and, uh, provides all sorts of great insights into principles of Indigenous health research. And this was based on the, uh, original, uh, C I H R, uh, guidelines as opposed to the tri-council policy. Um, there is also, uh, ethics guidance that I was involved in developing, uh, for C I H R that was, um, to be provided to the patient-oriented, uh, research network. And so this is ethic guidance, uh, for developing partnerships with patients and researchers and how to meaningfully, uh, engage with people with lived experience on a research team. Um, so patient-oriented research is similar to community-based research, but there are differences. And there's a lot of work going on across Canada in poor and, uh, things that I think HIV researchers could benefit from. Another, uh, area that has been developed, and this is by the Saskatchewan Centre for Patient-Oriented Research, is building research relationships with Indigenous communities or BRIC. And so this is a training module that is offered by Skipper, currently virtual, but, uh, uh, at some point, I guess it's expected to go back to in-person or maybe a hybrid model. But it's very well done and again helps to understand how to create and maintaining the respectful research partnerships. Um, Skipper also has what they call the Poilet, and this is a tool to help, uh, rank uh, or evaluate whether or not people with lived experience have been appropriately included. And, um, so you could do this, uh, as you're writing a proposal or as you're reviewing proposals or as you're going through your project, uh, periodically doing a check to make sure that in fact, uh, you know, there are people with lived experience being included meaningfully throughout the research process. And so here's an example of, uh, one of the, uh, scales on which they're looking at our outcomes that are important to patients. You can see they talk about the difference between informed, consulted, involved, collaborate. So really trying to get to, uh, meaningful and deep inclusion. Um, the other area that I think people are beginning to understand uh, the incredible importance of is Indigenous data sovereignty. And, uh, here is the, uh, First Nations Information Governance Centre's course on OCAP, and they also have other workshops. And so, uh, learning what to do and how to manage Indigenous data. Um, lastly, there are several of us who are innovating new approaches, methodologies when it comes to Indigenous health research. And these are really grounded in Indigenous epistemology, our ways of knowing, being and doing. They're holistic, integrative, and ecological, as opposed to a lot of scientific inquiry is, uh, deductive and, uh, reductionist. These are imbued with culture and language, ceremonial, engaging with spirit, and really are spanning the entire research lifecycle. And so I would hope that within 10 years, you're going to see some of these, um, being written up and available, uh, for others to be making use of. And I believe that that is the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alexandra, and we'll now go to Alex McClelland.
Thanks for having me, um, Scott and Carol. My name is Alexander McClelland, and I've been living with HIV for over 20 years. Uh, I'm an assisted professor of critical criminology at Carleton's Universe, at Carleton University's Institute of Criminology and Criminal Justice in Ottawa, and I'm a member of AIDS Action Now, the Canadian Coalition to Reform HIV Criminalization, and the Global Advisory Panel of HIV Justice Worldwide. Um, so for my presentation, I've gone, uh, full utopian vision for 2031. Um, what I describe is an imaginary vision for 10 years from now, and I'm tired of being in a reactive position, reacting to bad policy, to oppressive laws, and to harmful research practices. So my thoughts are really an effort to open imaginations and see beyond where we are now. So by 2031, settlers will have conceded all control of the land to Indigenous communities. Turtle Island will be governed but through traditional ways of knowing. Interdependence will be privileged over marketability. Connection to the land and to each other and to resources, as well as the preservation of the land and resources, will be understood as vital to community health and wellbeing. Individual forms of leadership and competition will be dismantled and collective, uh, collectivity and collaboration will be the way that we live. All biomedical knowledge, cutting-edge medical technologies and expertise will be common goods owned by the people. Development of new knowledge on health and wellbeing will be part of the commons and will be rewarded not through individual capital gains, but through the betterment of society. The patent system will be undone and sole proprietorship over medicines, chemicals, and compounds will be abolished. Top-down systems of surveillance, such as public health and epidemiological research, will be inverted. Data about our lives will not be extracted, held only by a few, and then used to study us as objects. Data about our lives will be held in community data trusts, which will be owned and governed by local communities, where data will be mobilized in the service of community needs to support health and wellbeing. A data trust is a data stewardship platform where data is managed and overseen, not by governments or private industry, but by a governance collective of community leaders and experts. Many different types of data trusts will exist based on geography. So data about people in your neighborhood could be used to help improve how you all live, as well as populations. So various populations could benefit from collective, the collective data of others. Data from communities will be collected through opt-in systems with dynamic, transparent, and ongoing consent, and where autonomy and data protection are key. If you are living with HIV, you could opt in to have your data about your life be part of a data trust run by and for people living with HIV. One will exist for people who use drugs, black people, Indigenous people, and so on. Those who are most impacted will be at the center of it all. Different communities will set their own research directions for how these data trusts will be, data trusts will be mobilized with researchers being primarily from those communities. If someone outside a community wants to apply to have access to the data from a trust to conduct research, they will need to demonstrate their ethical responsibilities to that community and must outline how the outcomes of their research are aligned with community priorities and will benefit that community. It will no longer be possible for data to be weaponized and to be used externally to pathologize, classify, label, or diagnose, and to then intervene in people's lives from outside. It will not be possible to build forms of capital off collecting people's biomaterial and information about people's lives, patterns, and behaviors. Algorithms will be regulated and will only be used for collective benefit as determined by communities themselves. And the inner dialogue that you might have telling you that what I'm saying is unrealistic, is not possible, is far-fetched, that innovation won't happen this way, that communities can't be trusted to know and define what they need, and that you or other sorts of experts know better, that inner, inner dialogue will also be gone from your mind in 2031. We will live with a new trust of the other, a trust that, uh, that others know what is best for their own lives. People will not be viewed as objects of study, but as rather as active subjects with autonomy and control over information about our lives. There will be no such thing as hard-to-reach people or at-risk communities. As an interventionist and surveillance, surveillance logic of public health, social workers and external researchers will be undone. Instead, communities will be provided, uh, with an abundance of resources to support themselves. As a result of settlers conceding control of the land to Indigenous communities, we will no longer be in a constant reactive position fighting against forms of structural oppression, harmful laws, and the resulting str- social stigma and discrimination. The settler colonial legal system will be abolished, meaning that oppressive criminal, the oppressive criminal justice system, laws, prison, and policing infrastructure will be dismantled. We will live by a governed understanding of do no harm or a collective understanding of do no harm with a deep respect for the other. In the rare instance where anyone enacts harm to another person, local communities will employ restorative justice models of community accountability. We will see beyond decriminalization and legalization. We will have realized total and complete drug liberation. Drug use will be understood not as a medical issue or as a risk or as a problem. Neoliberal individualism, which views any form of dependence as a failing or a problem, will be no more. The small number of people who depend on drugs regularly for survival will not be seen as having a disorder or an individual failing as human dependence on things and on each other will be understood as part of the natural independence of us all on each other to land and to resources. Outside of pain relief, drug use will only be viewed through the lens of pleasure. We won't need harm reduction. It will be reconceptualized as pleasure maximization. Drug supplies will, drug supplies will be regulated, and drugs will be available to whoever needs them. We will support each other to feel the best that we can, to have cognitive We will support each other to feel the best that we can, to have cognitive autonomy, and to feel as much pleasure as possible. People who've been incarcerated for drug penalties, for sex work, HIV criminalization, and other so-called crimes will be released, and there will be no such thing as criminal records preventing people from realizing economic security and wellbeing. HIV will be understood as a common human experience. It will not be not an individual moral failing that is sensationalized, pathologized, or stigmatized. There will be no need for the talk of eradicating or ending HIV, and the logic of risk will be no more. Poverty will be eradicated, billionaires will be abolished, and we will all have a realistic guaranteed income. Resources will be equitably redistributed to enable communities to support their own needs, and all communities will have access to housing, to clean drinking water, to sustainable food sources, and scarcity and austerity will be a thing of the past. We will live in abundance, and we will flourish. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Alex. That was awesome. There's some really interesting concepts I hadn't even thought of at all, like a data trust sounds amazing. Anyways, it's all great. Thank you so much. Next, to Ivan Leons.
Thanks, Scott. I think one of the things I was excited to do is bring the youth perspective to this panel, and I'm a bit old school, so I'm also going to be doing this without a PowerPoint presentation and just hopefully have a conversation with you through the camera. Hi, everyone. I'm joining you today from the shared territories of the Squamish, Slavites, and Musqueam Nations, where I live as an immigrant settler. I moved here in 2012 from one of my own ancestral homelands, Iri, land of the hummingbirds Kalinago Territory, also known as the island of Trinidad in southern Caribbean. My ancestors are the Afro-Caribbean people, the Tamil people, and the Kalinago people. And I'm really honored to have this opportunity to be with you all virtually and share some thoughts on the future of HIV. Now, I'm not a scientist or a researcher, I'm a community organizer and educator, and I work at an organization called Youth Go. It's an organization run entirely by youth who are living with HIV, as well as youth from communities most impacted by the virus, including the Black community, current trans communities, Indigenous communities, and immigrant communities. I work there with youth, some as young as six years old, all the way up to others in their late twenties. She puts a lot of my perspective on where I think HIV will be in the next 10 years. So it is my experience as a young person who came of age and began being sexually active only in the last 10 years, in a time that I think can only be described in the context of the last four decades of the epidemic as a period of really fantastic technological advancements in HIV treatments and prevention. And by the same token, my perspective is also informed by me navigating all of this as a Black queer man who, whether here in Canada, a bit south down to the US, even further to my homelands in the Caribbean, or across the ocean, east to the continent of Africa, in all of these places, I am and will be more likely to be past HIV in my lifetime, and on average would have far worse health outcomes as a result of the virus compared to my white or straight peers. Now, what does all of this have to do with where HIV will be in the next 10 years? Well, I think 10 years is a long time from now. And when working with these massive timelines, I find that looking at the past and also the present moment to be useful in predicting the future. And I know that's cliche, but it's cliche for a reason, it works. And as much as many things about HIV has changed for the better in the 30-year period that I talked about earlier, at least one thing has not changed or did not change. And that's the way that our larger structural institutions and the power and stigma within them shape the particular direction and the cadence of the virus in our communities. How it moves, where it finds home, who is most affected, and who is most protected. I don't think I need to go into the reasons behind that or the significance of this truth with this particular audience, and I actually think Winston did a stellar job of this. So instead, I want to call attention to the future and the radical potential that I think is possible within the current moment for youth, and what that means for what might change in the next 10 years. This generation of youth, including the one that I consider myself a part of, but more so the one that I'm just a bit older than, and I'm thinking the 18- to 25-year-olds here, they are really changing the game when it comes to disrupting these power structures that form the bedrock of why the most harmful effects of this virus continue to thrive in many of our communities. And they do that in person and online on TikTok, and it's really cool to see. I've been delivering workshops on HIV to youth for the last eight years or so, and what I've noticed is that over the years, regardless of the group, at the start of the workshop, no more than half of the folks there are aware of how HIV works, how it's passed, how it's treated, where to get tested, but by the end of the session, they do. This is one part of my job that has not changed in the last decade. Remarkably, though, what has changed and for the better is just the sheer breadth and depth of knowledge that I'm met with when I ask perhaps the more important questions, the more complex and tricky questions, like, why do we think that criminalization of HIV non-disclosure might not be a good law to have? Or why do we think that Indigenous people, trans people, Black people might be more affected or impacted by HIV? And better yet, what are the structures at play here, and what are some things that we might be able to do about this as individuals or as communities? I think this change in deeper systemic understanding is much more impactful than learning simple information, because I think it's easy to teach youth where to find a sexual health clinic or how to use a condom. It's easy to teach adults, particularly in the one hour we usually have together. But it is difficult to teach someone at any age how to trust or be a trusting healthcare provider with respect to race, sexuality, gender, so that people can actually go to those clinics. Or it's difficult to teach someone how to ask a partner to use a condom and to overcome the voice of a society that tells us that we are unworthy of the very basic needs and boundaries and unworthy of loving touch. But it is getting easier, and personally, I find that to be very remarkable, and I think it's an important indicator around what 2031 might look like. I've noticed that conversations about decolonization, gender-feminine care, and comprehensive sexual health education are increasingly everyday conversations for more and more youth. And the possibilities for change within that small shift, I don't think can really be understated. I want to wrap up and answer the central question, which is about the future. And I don't know if in 10 years, if we'll have a cure or a vaccine, that's not my area of expertise, but I think what my observations mean is that regardless of this, that in 10 years, we might be finally in a place where many of these biomedical advances are not stymied in the same way by socio-political barriers, and they can actually be taken up by people living all different types of lives, particularly those of us who are most marginalized. 10 years, as I said, is a long time, and there's so much that can change in that period if we facilitate it, and for those of us in power, if we step aside to allow it. And I think this is particularly true if we continue to equip young people with the tools to challenge and undo an unbrute stigma and oppression and empower them to do so. In 10 years, youth will be the physicians. In 10 years, youth will be the policymakers, the researchers, the public health officials, the decision-makers. Youth are already the activists. And it will require, though, what Winston noted, and I'll second, as radically inclusive decision-making for all of these things. It's no use if youth have all of this information, all of this knowledge, but we're not actually included in that conversation. In 10 years, if you do it right, I think we might have already arrived to this utopia that Alex was talking about, and I'm really, really hopeful that we'll be there, and it's my prediction, and I'm going to stick to it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ivan. I really appreciate that, and I agree, radically inclusive decision-making I see as a thread through a lot of what I'm hearing today as well. Our last speaker today is Sandra Kahon Chu, and I'll, Sandra, pass it over to you.
Thank you, Scott, and thank you to all the speakers. This is really inspiring to hear from all of you. My name is Sandra Kahon Chu. I'm the Director of Research and Advocacy at the HIV Legal Network, formerly the Canadian HIV AIDS Legal Network. And I also had a really ambitious ideas about what we might stand, where we might be in 2031. And short of like the actual removal of the settler colonial legal system, I have some ideas about, which I totally endorse what Alex recommended. I had some ideas about laws and policies that we might, I think we have a real shot at changing it by 2031. So I have some slides to share for that, which will outline what those are. Okay, so first, I wanted to touch on, well, one of the key things that have always struck me as absurd is that the Public Health Agency of Canada talks about priority populations, and these are, you know, people who use drugs, Indigenous peoples, people from racialized communities, sex workers, people in prison, trans people, all these people that many, the laws and policies of the colonial state criminalize, stigmatize, penalize. So one of the first things I wanted to touch on is current drug policy in Canada, which criminalizes possession, selling, importing, exporting production. And we know as a result of this criminalization, we have, in the last five years, arrested more than 500,000 people, close to 70% of them for simple drug possession, that's possession for personal use. And we know this law's not neutral. We know that Black and Indigenous people are disproportionately policed, arrested, incarcerated for drug offenses. In Toronto, where I live, studies have shown that Black people are three times more likely to be arrested for simple cannabis possession over white people. As a result of this criminalization, stigmatization, we see a lot of people driven away from health services, really important health harm reduction services, like needle and syringe programs, and we see 14% of new HIV infections are among people who inject drugs. People are driven away from supervised consumption services and overdose-dose prevention services. And we have these catastrophic rates of overdose deaths, almost 20,000 people have died in the latest statistics from Health Canada. And so, so that's drug policy today. And, you know, standing on the shoulders of all the amazing activists that have been pushing for reform, what do I see in 2031? I see the removal of all criminal sanctions and any other administrative penalties. That includes no confiscation of drug paraphernalia or substances, no course of interventions like drug treatment courts, no dissuasion commissions that they have in other jurisdictions, automatic expungement of previous convictions, the absolute removal of police as gatekeepers or liaisons for health services, which is something that's being floated by other actors in the criminal legal system right now, including chiefs of police, and access to safe supplies, criminalized drugs, where, as Alex mentioned, people would have access to currently scheduled substances like any other consumer product, which would be regulated on the basis of risk or harm versus some moral panic. And we see the impact of drug policy on the prison system in Canada. 80% of federally sentenced men have, this is CSCs, where the correctional services, Canada's own terminology, a substance use problem, and 92% of federally sentenced Indigenous women have moderate or high substance use needs. That, so a lot of people who use drugs are in prison, and where you don't have access to key tools to protect yourself in prison, like a needle and syringe program. And here's a picture of some correctional officers opposing a prison needle exchange program when it was announced two years ago. The rates of HIV are very high. You see the numbers I have here on the screen, particularly among Indigenous women in federal prisons. And it's not, again, not against a neutral backdrop. We have a prison system that incarcerates disproportionately Indigenous people and Black people. So when you deny healthcare and harm reduction services to people in prison, it's racism at play. So what I see in 2031, I see, hopefully prisons don't exist, but if they do exist, that health services are no longer provided by correctional authorities, people who are employed by correctional authorities, they're provided by healthcare providers who are employed by the healthcare system. So there's not this idea that they have, the healthcare provider owes a loyalty to security or needs to also be responsible for security versus their only concern should be their client, their patient's care, and that there would be health and harm reduction measures that are absolutely equivalent to what exists outside of prisons. That means HIV has C treatment, PrEP, sterile injection equipment, naloxone, supervised consumption, opioid agonist therapy, safe supply. Whatever exists in 2031 in the community should be also available in prison. I wanted to also talk about HIV criminalization. We know that by the end of last year, 2020, at least 225 prosecutions have been pursued for alleged HIV non-disclosure, and people most commonly charged with sexual assault and aggravated sexual assault with mandatory designation as a sex offender. Again, this has been weaponized against Black men and men who have sex with men, and when in cases involving women, they largely involve Indigenous women and women with a history of experiencing abuse. So this is actually from a platform, the Canadian Coalition to Reform HIV Criminalization. What they see as sort of some of the interim objectives of law reform, that they would limit, the federal government would reform the criminal code to limit the use of criminal law against people living with HIV, remove it from the ambit of sexual assault laws, and at minimum, at minimum, there are no prosecutions except in cases of actual intentional transmission. That federal provincial attorneys general develop sound prosecutorial guidelines based on the science and the principle of the least intrusive, most effective response, and that there's resources and training that are developed to address misinformation, fear, and stigma related to HIV. And finally, I wanted to touch on sex work criminal laws. So there's this misconception, I think, in Canada amongst some people that sex workers are not criminalized under the current criminal laws, which is totally untrue. And here are the five provisions in the criminal law. The first one itself captures sex workers who communicate in public, who are often the most marginalized as sex workers, often Black, trans, Indigenous sex workers working in public spaces. Purchasing sex is criminalized, materially benefiting and procuring sexual services, which are just people you work with, often sometimes sex workers, the third parties that sex workers work with, who might provide translation services, management services, secretarial services, and advertising is criminalized. And despite, you know, suggestions by the federal government that they have a willingness to change the law, we've seen no action on this front for many, many years. In 2031, the Canadian Alliance for Sex Work Law Reform has actually outlined a terrific platform about what they would like to see. That's their recommendations that I have on the slide here. They would like to see all sex work specific criminal provisions completely repealed. If sex workers desire law enforcement assistance, only if that existing criminal laws of general application be applied. So if they're seeking assistance, that they be treated with dignity and respect, and we know that's not the case right now, that sex workers who are actually physically assaulted can go to the police, and they were often derided, ignored, they don't get, they're not treated in a respectful way. And to address any concerns about exploitation in the industry, that we apply provincial, territorial legislation, including occupational health and safety law and employment standards that apply to all other labor, that we don't use sex work specific criminal law to address exploitation, we just, we confirm them the rights that all people who work already have. So that is my vision for 2031. Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk about this.
Great. Thank you so much, Sandra. That's all of our speakers for today, and all I can say is, wow. I'm sitting here trying to jot some notes of how to summarize this, and I'm going to fail miserably, and that's why we're going to have a question and answer at the end, which I think will do a much better job. But, you know, as I think, you know, 10 years in the future towards a utopian future, you know, how do we get to utopian future? And how do we identify, you know, better, more holistic healthcare, you know, overall, and not giving up on a cure? I have to admit, every now and then, I do, you know? We don't hear about it much, you know, anymore. And recognizing there's a very urgent need, you know, immediately to address race, racism, Blackness, and to address the barriers that create and advance stigma and criminalization, you know, amongst, amongst people who are becoming HIV or are HIV. And I really like the idea of the community engagement, how do we ensure community stays involved, and how do we ensure that radical decision-making, you know, is at all levels? And with that, I think now we will open it up to the Q and A as we go forward, and I want to, I want to thank each and every participant for their thoughts so far, and look forward to getting some questions and hearing you speak a little bit more about your individual topics. Thanks so much.